Welcome to the Thursday, August 1st, 2024 Regular Meeting of the South San Francisco Planning Commission. This meeting is being held in person at the Library, Parks and Recreation Building Council Chambers. To provide comment during the meeting, please fill out a speaker card and give it to the clerk. You will have three minutes to make your comments. Please note all commission time limits and rules of decorum will apply to public comments. I hereby call this meeting of the Planning Commission to order. May we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance, through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we please have roll call?
Chairperson Faria.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Funes Aztark.
Here.
Commissioner Zhang.
Here.
Commissioner Shahadeh.
Here.
Commissioner Pamakou.
Here.
Commissioner Baker.
Also here.
And Commissioner Evans is absent.
Do we have any changes to the agenda?
No changes.
Any items from staff or announcements?
The only announcement from staff is to thank Chair Faria and Vice Chair Aztark, who will be giving a presentation at City Council. I believe the date was October 9th, and we will coordinate more as it gets closer.
Thank you. Does any member of the public wish to address the commission an item that is not on the agenda at this time?
We do not have any speaker cards for items not on the agenda.
Next on the agenda is the disclosure ex parte communication. If any commissioners had any communications with applicants, did any site or project visits or interactions with third parties, or has any conflicts regarding any items on the agenda, you may disclose them at this time. If you would like to recuse yourself for an item, you can also do that at this time. Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item. Consent calendar.
We have two items on the consent calendar. Number one is consideration and approval of minutes from the June 20th, 2024 Planning Commission. Number two is approval of master sign program and design review applications for an existing life science campus located at the corner of Veterans Boulevard and Oyster Point Boulevard in the Business Technology Park in accordance with Title 20 of the South San Francisco Municipal Code, subject to conditions of approval and determination that the project is categorically exempt from CEQA.
Does any commissioner wish to pull the consent calendar?
Through the chair. I am absent. I was absent on June 20th, so I will need to abstain that one, but like the other one I could approve. So can I just say it like that, or we'll have to do it in a separate way?
I would recommend pulling the item then and voting on it separately.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, I believe I was also absent that meeting.
That's on the same...
I believe it was the 20th?
Yes, June 20th.
Okay. Do we have any comments from the public on the consent calendar?
We have no speaker cards for the consent calendar.
Okay. Then what we'll do is on the motions for the, we'll do June 20th first, we'll have a vote on that when a roll call. Do I have a motion to approve that first?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of June 20th, Planning Commission.
A second.
Okay.
Okay. Chair Faria.
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Funes Aztark.
Yes.
Commissioner Zhang.
Abstained.
Commissioner Shahadeh.
Yes.
Commissioner Pamakou.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
And Commissioner Evans is absent. The motion passes.
Could I have a motion to approve the master sign program, item number two?
I'll make a motion to approve the master sign item.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Chair Faria.
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Funes Aztark.
Yes.
Commissioner Zhang.
Yes.
Commissioner Shahadeh.
Yes.
Commissioner Pamakou.
Yes.
And Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Evans is absent, and the motion passes.
Okay. Next on the agenda, I'd like you to open up the public hearing. And a presentation from staff.
I will read the item, and item number three is report regarding a public hearing for a 45-day comment period from June 30th, 2024, to August 5th, 2024, for the draft environmental impact report for the proposed 131 Terminal Development Project for a new 1.7 million square feet research and development campus at 131 Terminal Court. And Billy Gross is going to give the staff report.
It's June 20th, not 30th.
I said the date. Did you hear that?
Say that again.
On the consent calendar, I said the incorrect date.
No, no. Edina just mentioned.
Oh, I apologize.
The 45-day comment, I thought I heard June 30th. It should be June 20th.
Oh, June 20th. Did I say it incorrectly? Okay, it's June 20th.
You know, I'm getting older. I thought it was me.
Thank you. Chair, Vice Chair, fellow commissioners, nice to see everybody this evening. Tonight, we are before the Planning Commission to provide an initial look at the Infinite 131 Project, which is located at 131 Terminal Court, and an opportunity to gather public and Planning Commission comments on the draft environmental impact report. The Planning Commission will not be asked to make a decision or a recommendation to the City Council tonight. The full entitlements request and final EIR will come back to the Planning Commission and then on to City Council at a future date. Comments on the draft EIR will be recorded, and the city and the consultant will provide formal responses in the final EIR document. I will provide a brief project introduction, but the majority of my presentation will provide an overview of the draft EIR. Following my presentation, the applicant team will provide a more in-depth look at the Infinite 131 Project details. Next slide. I'll start my presentation by providing an overview of the general context of the site location.
I'm sorry, Billy. Through the chair, we are not getting the presentation on our screens, and rather than have to crane our necks, can we see if we can get that?
So I'll ask IT if you can have the presentation appear on the commissioners' screens as well.
There it is.
And on the big screen.
Thank you.
There. Oh, no. Okay.
We'll get there. We always like seeing ourselves.
All those beautiful smiles, oh, guys.
There we go.
All right, there we go.
Perfect.
So we're started by kind of starting a broad site context. This graphic shows the general location within South San Francisco. You can see the project site highlighted in red. Next slide. Here is the neighborhood location showing other recent projects in the surrounding area. For instance, the Tamperam Project, which is actually in San Bruno, the South Line Master Plan, specific plan project, 180 El Camino, which is also a Steelwave project, and you can see the specific 131 site highlighted in red-orange. Next slide. Zooming in a little bit more, this graphic shows how the project site will fit within its surroundings. Next slide. The proposed Infinite 131 Project Site will be coordinated with the Infinite 101 Project Site, which is immediately to the east. The Planning Commission approved entitlements for the Infinite 101 Project in September of 2023. The two projects have been designed as one cohesive campus, but each of the separate projects could be constructed as a standalone project. Next slide. The Infinite 131 Project would include the demolition of the existing Golden Gate Produce Terminal, and would construct approximately 1.7 million square feet of research and development uses and amenities within seven buildings. The applicant team will provide a more detailed overview of the project as part of their presentation, including renderings, landscaping, site plans, and such. Next slide. This project location map highlights the areas that have been analyzed as part of the draft EIR. The 131 Terminal Court Project Site is outlined in black. The parcels that are outlined in the blue dashed line just to the north are referred to as the off-site redesignation parcels, and they are included in the environmental analysis because staff is proposing to change the general plan designation of these parcels from mixed industrial to Business Technology Park High, which is the same as a current designation for the 101 Terminal Site and the proposed designation for the 131 Terminal Site, with the overall vision being that all of that area could then be redeveloped as office R&amp;D portion. Next slide. So this, we'll start to go through kind of highlighting what's the purpose of the draft EIR. The first part is to analyze potential environmental impacts of the Infinite 131 Project. The document discloses information to the public and to decision-makers about the potential environmental effects, and then tries to find ways to avoid or reduce potential project impacts with alternatives and mitigation measures. The IR does not recommend project approval or denial, it's just an independent analysis. I will say that this EIR is a combined EIR, including project-level analysis for the 131 Terminal Project Site and program-level analysis for the off-site redesignation parcels. As a reminder, program-level analysis is similar to what was done for the general plan update. Any further future development projects that are within the off-site redesignation parcels would need to prepare additional environmental analysis indicating consistency with this program EIR, as well as preparing any site-specific analysis. Next slide. This graphic just shows where we are in the CEQA process, collecting public comments on the draft EIR. Next slide. As we stated at the beginning, we have circulated this for public review and comment. It's a 45-day review period that started on June 20th, and the last day for the city to receive comments is next Monday, August 5th. Tonight's hearing is just for Planning Commission and public comments on the draft EIR. In addition to the hearing, comments can be provided via mail and email, and I'll provide those addresses at the end of my presentation as well. Next slide. So an initial study was prepared to provide preliminary analysis and determine that development of the proposed project would not result in significant impacts for the majority of environmental topics. The initial study is included as Appendix B to the draft EIR. So the draft EIR itself examines potential environmental impacts for the remaining five topics, which are identified on this slide: air quality, cultural resources, greenhouse gas emissions, noise and vibration, and transportation and circulation. Next slide. There were a total of 14 potentially significant impacts that are identified in the draft EIR. Of these 14, five potentially significant impacts are capable of being reduced to less than significant levels through implementation of mitigation measures. And so we've listed, there are two impacts related to cultural resources that have been reduced to less than significant, one for noise, one impacting biological resources, and one in geology and soils. Next slide. For the nine remaining potentially significant impacts, feasible mitigation measures have either not been identified, have uncertain feasibility, or may not be effective in reducing impacts to less than significant. These significant and unavoidable impacts are related to air quality, cultural resources, and transportation and circulation. Next slide. This table just outlines those impacts by topic area, and also whether they are project-only or for cumulative impacts, which is a result of a contribution to impacts from several projects over time. I'll go through each of these five significant and unavoidable impacts separately. Next slide. The first is for regional air quality impacts for operation. These impacts are primarily a result of area source emissions, examples of which include the use of consumer products like cleaning products and such, or landscaping equipment. Other sources include stationary source emissions, which is from things like emergency diesel generators, mobile source emissions, which is from daily vehicle trips to and from the site, and the final one is from laboratory operations within life science buildings. The draft EIR does identify mitigation measures that would partially reduce impacts, such as a requirement to use low volatile organic compound products and zero emission landscape equipment. However, even with the incorporation of these mitigation measures, the impacts would remain above the Bay Area Air Quality Management District's air quality thresholds, and therefore they would be considered significant and unavoidable impacts. Next slide. In relation to localized air quality, the project could expose sensitive receptors, in this case worker receptors within 1,000 feet of the project site, to substantial pollutant concentrations. I will note that worker receptors is a new sensitive receptor category that is within the Bay Area Air Quality Management District's thresholds that were updated in 2022. Previous to those thresholds, we did not look at worker receptors as a sensitive receptor for air quality purposes. Next slide. So I include this slide with a graphic showing the proximity of the 131 Terminal Site to the adjacent 101 Terminal Sites. Because of this proximity and the prevailing winds, pollutant concentrations from vehicles that access the 131 Terminal Site would not be able to disperse adequately before making it over to the buildings on the 101 Terminal Site, which is why worker receptors would be within, like, would be exposed to potential air quality impacts. No mitigation measures have been identified to avoid this exceedance, so these impacts would be considered significant and unavoidable. Next slide. Now moving to cultural resources, the Golden Gate Produce Terminal Facility has been recommended as eligible for listing in both the California Register of Historical Resources and the National Register of Historic Places. Obviously, because the Infinite 131 Project would demolish the existing produce terminal, this would result in a substantial adverse change to the historic resource. Next slide. So the draft EIR identifies two separate mitigation measures to reduce the impact. The first would require written and photographic documentation of the significant and character-defining features of the property and recordation of the historic and architectural characteristics. The second mitigation measure would require the design and installation of an interpretive signage plan and/or a public interpretation program on the project site. These mitigation measures would reduce adverse impacts, but the impacts would remain significant and unavoidable because of the ultimate demolition of the produce terminal. I will provide one note related to this item. When the project comes back to the Planning Commission and City Council for entitlement hearings, the project team will provide examples of what the public signage or interpretation program could look like on the project site, so we'll have a better idea of what that might be as part of the overall project, and we'll bring that back as part of the entitlement hearings. Next slide. The final category with significant and unavoidable impacts is transportation and circulation. The proposed Infinite 131 Project was not identified or studied in the general plan update or the Lindenville specific plan, and the project would result in an intensification of uses in an area that currently has inadequate access and circulation facilities for such an intensification. The project would also increase vehicle trips at several streets and freeway ramps with unsignalized intersections adjacent to the project site, which would increase hazards due to a geometric design feature. Next slide. So this slide indicates the proposed transportation-related mitigation measures, which include intersection improvements in signalization, construction of a Class IV separated bikeway, and engineering studies and fair share contributions for future larger improvements. Next slide. These identified mitigation measures would, if all implemented, adequately address the project's transportation-related effects. Some of the improvements are located within the jurisdiction of other agencies, including Caltrans and the City of San Bruno. City staff believes that these other jurisdictions will ultimately support the proposed improvements. However, because the city doesn't have the ultimate authority to require all of the mitigation measures to be completed, and therefore cannot be certain of the construction, this would remain a significant and unavoidable impact for CEQA documentation purposes. So then with all of these significant and unavoidable impacts in the three different categories, I will note that ultimately this project cannot be approved unless the City of South San Francisco adopts a statement of overriding considerations, which balances the benefits of the proposed project against its unavoidable air quality, cultural resources, and transportation impacts. The Planning Commission and City Council would review this statement of overriding considerations during future entitlement hearings when taking action to certify the draft and final environmental impact report. Next slide. An EIR is also required to provide an assessment of whether reasonable and feasible alternatives to the project could avoid or substantially reduce any of the identified significant impacts. So the draft EIR evaluates three alternatives. We always look at a no-project alternative. In that case, the existing Golden Gate Produce Terminal would remain. The alternative would avoid all of the project's significant and unavoidable impacts, but obviously would not meet any of the project objectives. Alternative B is a Business Technology Park medium alternative. What this alternative looks at is, rather than developing to the BTP high zoning allowance, which is up to a 2.0 floor area ratio, it would build to a BTP medium regulations, which allow a maximum floor area ratio of 1.0. This would result in approximately half of the total building area. This alternative was considered as potentially avoiding transportation-related impacts because of the reduced square footage. It would reduce, but does not avoid any of the project's significant and unavoidable impacts, and does not result in any new impacts. This alternative would partially meet project objectives, but may not be economically feasible. And then the last alternative, alternative C, is an increased office space alternative. It involves the same total building area as the proposed project, but would propose a higher ratio of office uses and lower ratio of laboratory space, resulting in more total onsite employees. This alternative was considered as potentially avoiding air quality-related impacts. Ultimately, this alternative would not avoid any of the significant and unavoidable impacts of the proposed project, and actually increases the severity of the transportation-related Based on the overall analysis, alternative B is considered the environmentally superior alternative of the three alternatives. Next slide. So in summary, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission take public comments on the draft EIR, and provide any comments that you have to staff on the environmental document and also on the project following the presentation from the project team. Next slide. I will note that written comments, again, can be provided via email to the address indicated on the slide, or via email to billy.gross@ssf.net. All written comments are due by 5:00 PM next Monday, August 5th, 2024. Next slide. This and staff's presentation, I will note that I am joined this evening by Devon Attenberry and Heidi McElson of ICF, which is the environmental consultant team that prepared the draft EIR, as well as Daniel Jacobson with Farr and Pierce, who prepared the transportation-related analysis. All of them are available to help answer questions that the commission or the public may have. The applicant team is also in attendance. I will now turn the meeting over to Steve Dunn with Steelwave, and he can introduce the rest of the project team, but happy to answer any initial questions that the commission may have.
Any questions from the commission to staff before we turn it over to the applicant?
Question?
To staff?
Yes. We can also, if you wanted to, wait till after the...
I would prefer that, too.
Okay, okay.
I've written it down, so.
Welcome.
Good evening, Honorable Chair and Commissioners. I'm Steve Dunn with Steelwave. We're excited to be here tonight. We want to thank the staff, ICF, and Farr and Pierce for all their really good work on this. This is a good-sized project, and they've just done a very professional and good job on this, so we're very thankful. We have our team members here tonight. If we do get questions, we hope we can answer them for you. And with that, I will introduce Mark Schwetman of SOM to present the project.
Thanks, Steve. Mark. Oh, it does work. Thank you, Commissioners, for your time this evening. I will go pretty quickly in respect of that time. Of course, we're here to answer questions. Billy shared with you the context of the project, so I'll flip through this quickly. I will note that the project has two primary circulation connections, one from Terminal Court to the north, and then one with an easement to Shaw Road to the south. And now, there we go. That easement connects to Shaw Road at the south, which makes its way through the adjacent master plan project to the west. We think that's an important connection that over time will be enhanced to create a better linkage to El Camino and to the San Bruno-Bart Station. This is the site today, the produce terminal and its primarily parking and loading facilities. And really an interesting site that has a unique condition that led to what we think is a very interesting site plan proposal: freeway on the east, party wall, commercial and industrial buildings to the west, the slough to the south. And so the concept is a series of gently curving R&amp;D buildings that both create and simultaneously shelter a series of open spaces. Those open spaces are then activated by amenities, by lobbies, and by landscaping. Here are the buildings shown in the site plan, curving around the site from north to east to west to south, where they visually connect to the Infinite 101 buildings visually, but not directly. Here's the roof plan. The project is actually seven buildings, but three are grouped together and another two are grouped together, so overall there's four forms on the site, including a parking garage at the northwest corner of the site. Ground floor plans show a mix of lobbies, active amenities, retail-like amenities, the parking, and then service uses along one side of each of the buildings. I'll note the extensive improvements to circulation on the site, with particularly the shared path along the entire western edge of the site that then connects out towards Produce Avenue, and hopefully with future improvements to a connection on San Mateo. So it's really the nature of the open spaces that define this project. The buildings shelter these spaces and give them unique form. The project has a very strong presence on 101, whether entering South City from the south or passing through it from the north. And despite its scale, it is broken down into a series of smaller pieces. The six-story buildings are in two-story sections, which are defined from each other by a series of shifting terraces and balconies. Vince Letenzio from Carducci and Associates is here. He's led the landscape design, which is really inspired by the variety of ecosystems either present or formerly present on the site and in the area, bringing that biophilic approach to the users of the site. There is an extensive amount of native planting, trees deciduous and evergreen of various scales, ground cover of various types, permeable paving and other ground materials, and really a wide range of scale of spaces, from the south courtyard, which is integrated into an amenity building, to a more open, large north courtyard with a civic lawn at the center of it. And the elevations at the top of these two pages show the vertical scale of that landscape relative to the two-story sections of the buildings. All of these open spaces are tied together by a feature that we're calling the infinite path. It's a series of looping pedestrian paths around the center of the site. In places its character is almost urban, where defined by the large scale of the buildings, but then it opens up into the civic lawn at the north. It connects all of the building lobbies, all of the building amenities, and places it has a much more intimate pedestrian scale, where here you see it scaled by these two rows of trees on each side. So the buildings themselves, as I mentioned, there are five primary flexible R&amp;D buildings, the amenity building and the parking garage... the amenity building and the parking garage. Although these are relatively tall buildings at around 100 feet, they're very widely spaced in the center, and they've been carefully coordinated with Infinite 101. The distance between the 131 building at the left of this drawing and the 101 building on the right is almost 500 feet. And then at the center of that is a two-story terrace building, which contains amenities and retail-like food and beverage spaces. The north courtyard, little over 300 feet. This one is screened from the winds on the west by a parking garage, both above and below grade. And actually, the buildings here step quite a bit at their third floor to create another kind of outdoor space that looks down on that lawn. The buildings have a gently curving form, which is actually defined by individually flat, slightly angled and serrated pieces of glass. The two-story sections serve to reduce the apparent height of the buildings, and we think this gently curving and faceted facade will have a really interesting effect of creating a kind of kaleidoscope of reflections of sky, of the adjacent buildings, and of the landscape itself. At the ground, the buildings are enriched by kind of warmer pallets lining the entries and amenities. That's a two-story entry at the corner of one of the south buildings. And those entry frames, as seen on the right, relate strongly to the two-story amenity building, creating a more pedestrian scale of warmer materials around that infinite path we talked about. The materials are minimal and modern, appropriate, we think, to this time and place. And then where you get closer to them, at lobbies, entries and terraces are warmed up by wood-like and copper-like metal panels. Project of this scale, sustainability, there are great opportunities and also responsibilities. We mentioned the water efficiency of the landscaping. There's very extensive rooftop photovoltaic. It is an all-electric building, which comes in part from a life-cycle carbon analysis that is underway, which analyzes the impact of each of the building systems in terms of the long-term carbon footprint. That's informed the structural system, as well as other material choices. Building will be lead gold or better. We plan to have it well-certified. We've worked with city staff to make sure that the southern edge of the building, where it faces the slough, is respectful to any wildlife, which may find that area home with bird-safe glazing up to 60 feet in height. And then the smaller amenity building is really the social and cultural heart of the building. It's a two-story building that's terraced into the landscape with open space indoor and out, both on the lower and the upper levels. It has a scale more suited to food halls, small conference center, and event terrace up at the top there. Here you can see that that terrace is defined by a large sort of heritage tree growing through an opening in the second-floor roof deck. And when viewed from above, the courtyard at the south end of the site terraces up through the center of the building, creating multiple entrances for those uses so they can serve different populations and different functions. The materiality of that building is intended to be a heavy timber building, both for sustainability, but also for adding a character to the scale of those spaces. Finally, you may remember the parking garage from Infinite 101, which is clad in this dynamic artwork by Bay Area artist Ned Khan. The parking garage at the northwest corner of the 131 site is respectful of that. It is not nearly as prominent, and so, in deference to the artistic character of the other, this one is clad in a kind of simplified version of the same system with a delicate metal screening, and also relying on the same elements of stairs, elevators, and other circulating pieces to reduce the mass and add visual interest to the building. So with that, thank you. We're here to answer any questions you have, and appreciate your time.
Okay, I'll now turn it over to the commission.
What I was just going to say is, obviously, the primary purpose of tonight's meeting is to take public comments on the draft environmental impact report. But I would say for kind of the rest of the project, like if you have any design-level comments, or if there are things that you would like us to go into more detail on when we come back for entitlement hearings, if there are specific things that you've seen that you'd just like to have more information on, that would also be useful, so we make sure that we adequately address that when we're back before you again at some point in the future.
I would now turn over the commission for questions. Commissioner Zhang?
Through the chair. So not going to comment on whether I really like it or not. Questions? Yeah, normally I don't ask this much question, but I kind of don't remember I have any project in front of us that has so many S/ U, you know, like unavoidable mitigations. And my first question, this is kind of like, you know, if we just accept it with, you know, a statement of declaration, you know, why we accept it, yada, yada, who is ultimately going to pay for the consequence of accepting these, right? So my thinking is our neighborhood, our citizens, not the applicant, or not even the city, like, right? So in order, I'm glad that Billy mentioned that this is not approvable right now, because like, I was like, as much as I love how it looks, like, the first time I said, I was like, dude, I can't. So I do want to know, like, should we accept, like, who is paying for it? And let's say if the answer is the citizen, right, then, like, just because we love the building does not grant us the right to just say, yeah, I want the job opportunity, I want the income, or stuff like that, in return for their suffering? For example, traffic and circulation. I know we have a lot of EIR stating that, like, it is maybe unavoidable but bearable on the heavy developments, like, you know, near El Camino-Chestnut area, using some of my people saying, like, every time they try to, you know, pass that traffic light, like, in my language, they want to die, right? So there is a discrepancy between what EIR portrays versus what people are experiencing. And I get more uncomfortable and uncomfortable when, like, when we just think that it will, you know, things will wing it on the, you know, traffic, transportation, and congestions, and, you know, annoyance to the city. So my question for that in particular, can this project be further phased out, hypothetically phased out, so that the transportation issue could be further mitigated? Like, I know right now there are two big buildings, like, let's say, creatively speaking, if those two big buildings can, you know, build half it, kind of like a burrito sliced into half, and then eventually built to the complete form of each of those, even though there's a lot of waste factor, but like, is phasing that out further, can that help transportation, like, issues? And then air quality, that's my second question, is for the air quality impact, is it the, is it because the nature of this is a lap that the air quality will be impacted a lot more versus if we pick it to 80% office, then the air quality impact would be a lot less? Is that how I should comprehend it? The reason why I ask is, like, I'm thinking that if we have to change the proposed use, like, it might not be possible, which also means that I have to understand this project more correctly. Is it because the amount of R&amp;D proposed is too much for our city to take? Then if the answer is yes, the R&amp;D part is really the main reason for the air quality problem, then we have to hear that. Because otherwise, like, changing it to 80%, like, if it works, like, we're like, okay, great, like, do office, but probably that's not what the applicant is proposing, then we're talking about different things. And then, you know what? It's too heavy. I'm gonna, I'll say my other three later. Thank you.
Would you like me to start on his, answering his questions?
He has three more, I would start picking away at him.
Okay, okay. I will say that prior to the general plan update, for basically, for the majority of office R&amp;D projects in the east of 101, we, for basically every project, we had significant and unavoidable transportation impacts, because there were often impacts of, for instance, queuing onto the freeway main line. And there are pro, like, implementation or mitigation measures that could be implemented that would mitigate that, but because Caltrans ultimately has to say yes to that project, and we can't guarantee it, we would always find those significant and unavoidable. Air quality was also very typically a significant and unavoidable. I will say for, in this instance, the air quality, for instance, one of them was related to worker receptors. And so because 101 Terminal is entitled first, they could start construction of that project at any time. If that was constructed, and then you start construction of the 131 Terminal project, you already have worker receptors there. If they would have come in, for instance, in reverse order, where 131 Terminal was built first and 101 Terminal was built second, you would not have that impact, because you wouldn't have, the worker receptors would be downwind, or would be upwind from, in that case. And so this is a new, we have not had that impact before, because worker receptors were not considered a sensitive receptor under previous BACMed or Bay Area Quality Management District thresholds. The architectural coatings, the, all of the consumer products, that type of thing, you see that used in every project. One of the other things I was going to say with the air quality portion is a lot of the overall impact is also due to other things in the area. For Lindenville, for instance, there is the concrete batch plant. A large part of the area sources comes from that. And so just by being in somewhat close proximity to those projects, you're already, like, really close to the air quality thresholds. And it's just as a high level for those. In terms of the asking about phasing out for transportation issues, one of the requirements is that any of the transportation mitigation measures have to be installed before any occupancy can happen at the 131 Terminal project. So the Class IV bikeway, the signalization improvement, everything, definitely that's within the city's jurisdiction, those have to be completed before we would allow them any tenants to occupy the sites. We would then continue to work with, so the portion that's somewhat within the city of San Bruno's jurisdiction are any of those improvements to the Sneith-Tanforan intersection. My estimation is that they want all of that to work well, as, in addition to the city. Same thing with Caltrans. Caltrans wants the project impacts to freeway, like, to not have impacts. And so it's, we will work very closely with all of those organizations to kind of, if we need to make slight modifications, to make this work. But ultimately, we can't guarantee that. That's why they're still considered significant and unavoidable. But that has typically been the case for these kinds of projects in the east of 101. We have less of that now with the general plan update, EIR, but because this project is an intensification of what we looked at, that's why we're having to look at these in more detail. It's just, it's more square footage than we expected to begin with. Yeah?
Okay. Thank you, Billy. Through the chair, if I can just add one thought. One thing I was thinking when Billy was explaining some of the mitigation measures and the thresholds is that CEQA, the CEQA standards, and I would ask our, you know, our consultants from ICF to jump in if I'm misstating anything, but the CEQA standards and thresholds change over time and have gotten more strict. There's a higher threshold, and there's a higher bar, which is great. I mean, that's really good, and that's what we, you know, we want, so there's more emphasis on environmental impacts. And it's also pushing projects further to do more mitigation and to do higher-quality, you know, materials and use, you know, all the low-water landscaping and all that. So, but it's a little hard, I feel like it's a little hard to compare. So because it changes over time, it's hard to compare projects that may have been approved five or six years ago with projects now in terms of the number of significant unavoidables, because there may be new impact areas that we're studying that didn't exist. So it's, just, so just something to think about in terms of it may not be apples-to-apples to say, a project of the same square footage, you know, was designed in a way five years ago, it may have actually been, had larger effects, but was studied differently. So I'm not speaking to this project. I mean, Billy obviously knows all, you know, way more, knows all the details about this one, but just kind of a philosophical thought on how CEQA changes over time.
The last thing I was going to speak to, thanks for letting me think through this a little bit more. You'd asked the, how do we balance, like, looking at each of the impacts? And I think basically, we have to look at each of these, there's the five significant and unavoidable impacts, and we would look at each one separately to say, are we okay with the benefits from the projects? Do we believe they outweigh the significant impacts? And so for the cultural resources, you look at that, like, what they're doing and what the proposed mitigation is, do those balance? You have to look at each of those separately, and it's, some of these are a much more kind of local impact, some of them you could say maybe have a little bit greater, but I think ultimately that's what we would be looking at is, do we agree that the benefits of the project balance the, any negative impacts? And yeah, we'll look through that, and we'll have that discussion in more detail, but it's good to know those. But yeah, it's ultimately Planning Commission providing a recommendation, and City Council having to say yes to that for any other further entitlements to be made for this project.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Shahidi?
Yeah.
Through the chair. Staff, isn't Steelwave the developer for the Safeway project as well?
For, yeah, for the, yes, correct.
Yeah. So if they're not able to develop that project, they've already got entitlements, how could they be applying for a new project, which is massive, which is going to cost a lot more? And how could the community accept us engaging such a massive project? We all know that everybody in the community's been asking about Safeway. We need a supermarket in South City. We don't even know the status of that project yet. So that's question number one. I mean, I'm being asked to look into a massive project while we have another one on hold.
I'll start by saying, obviously, we have lots of different projects entitled. One of the things that we will come back forward with the 131 Terminal project is Steelwave will be asking for a development agreement, and so uncertain what that timeframe is. That is also typical for a project of this size that likely could be built in phases. We saw that with the Vantage project on Forbes, Britannia Cove. And so each entitlement project stands on its own merits. We can't look at that in relation to other projects. The Safeway and the 180 El Camino project don't have standing related to the application that we're being asked to review and ultimately approve.
No, I understand that. Fully understand that. My approach is the community. We have, we're accountable to the community. One of the main issues that I have with a massive project like this, we've seen the development on Airport Boulevard, you know, all the changes, like, the, we only have one lane that's going to the freeway. I can't imagine the massive... I can't imagine the massive tie-up that's going to be created. And the mitigation measures or SEQA analysis, you know, clearly states that there's going to be a big problem, circulation, transportation. The other question I have is we've faced a major issue. When it rains, that floods. And that's a major issue which the city has not resolved yet. My understanding is, okay, is that Caltrans's responsibility? Is it going to be the developer's responsibility? Is it going to be the city? But these are real issues that we need to address and I'm sure SEQA is addressing. Or are they?
For...
I'm talking about transportation, all the impact to the community, not only to the development stage, but...
So obviously, SEQA is looking at the environmental impacts, but it does not, it has very specific topics that it looks at. I will say for the entitlements that are coming before, one of the things we'll talk to you about in more detail is the zoning ordinance has a sea level, sea level rise, floodplain ordinance. And so the project site will be raised rather significantly to bring it outside of kind of both sea level rise and floodplain concerns. And so we will be able to talk through those in more detail when we actually get through the entitlement portions. But this is good for us to know the specific items to focus on more when we do come back before you. The one comment related to transportation impacts, the SEQA, the draft EIR does indicate that with the implementation of the mitigation measures, the additional traffic that would be created by this project would be able to function. I will note that SEQA no longer looks at level of service, that that is not something that SEQA considers. But the trips that would be created by the proposed developments would be able to be mitigated adequately with the implementation of the mitigation measures that are included in the draft EIR.
Thank you. I remember when we had the 101 project come before us a while back, and I'm really happy to see the quote-unquote sister project here because it's really helpful for me to think of this as basically one giant campus. And I see that in some of these mitigation members, notably when 101 came before us, we talked about, you know, we're really worried about that on-ramp at Produce Avenue, people speed down it now. And if we're using that as an exit, you know, we'd be seeing potentially a lot of accidents. And even in this EIR on page 216, it notes those traffic impacts are potentially significant. And you just mentioned while LOS is not considered, VMT is, and I do think we're going to definitely see a lot of additional VMT out of this. But can, we confirm that the circulation project, the circulation patterns in this whole campus are taken together as basically one thing? Because I'll re-mention a concern I had before with the other project that, you know, if there is an emergency situation, that, I believe it was Sam who said that's a one-lane highway on the Produce side, and I think the Shaw entrance would just be one lane. Do we have enough capacity for a simultaneous evacuation and emergency vehicles going in at the same time? That's a, that's a concern. Has that been looked at? I didn't see anything specifically about evacuation or anything here in the draftees.
I will state, and we will definitely bring back graphics that show this in more detail when we come back, but I do know that the Fire Marshal has looked at that closely and is comfortable with the access that's being provided. The Shaw Road actually would be able to do two-way for those purposes. One note I will give is, yes, the 101 Terminal project had certain improvements that were intended for the square footage of additional area that it would provide. This then builds on those. And so there are certain improvements that will be done to the Terminal Court Produce Airport intersection as part of the 101 project. And then additional improvements would need to happen to accommodate the additional square footage as part of the 131 Terminal. The entire site was looked at for this project as it working together, both of them, in collaboration with one another. But I do know from circulation and emergency vehicle kind of circulation standpoint that city staff, including police and fire, have reviewed and were comfortable with it. But we'll bring more detail for that when we come back before you.
I have a question that, kind of on the fly, it was brought up by something by, Philip Commissioner Alex brought up, about the preferred environmental alternative being the R&amp;D. Is that because if the more office option, that would be more people, more cars, et cetera, to the site?
When you look at alternative scenarios, one of the requirements is that one of those, you do a minimum of three, some people do more than that, one of those has to be considered the environmentally superior. I would say, looking at it as it's the environmentally superior of those three alternatives, might not be environmentally superior to the proposed project. And that's ultimately what we look at. And those alternatives are identified, trying to, can you reduce one of, like one or all of the identified significant and unavoidable impacts? And so, yeah, the thought was if your laboratory space is one of the areas that is creating more air quality impacts, if you reduce that, does that have a noticeable impact or a reduction in the, in that air quality impact overall? And it reduced it, but it still exceeded the Bayer Air Quality Management District's threshold. So even if, like, if that were the project to come in, we would still be coming before you with, oh, this is considered significant and unavoidable because it exceeds the threshold. One of the results of reducing the laboratory space, you up the office space, you have a lot more people on the site, so all of the transportation impacts ended up becoming more severe. And so we would have to create then additional, what other mitigation measures could we do for that? And so, all of this to say that it's the environmentally superior of the three alternatives that we looked at, does not mean that it's necessarily environmentally superior over the proposed project itself. That's part of the ultimate conversation we have when we entitle.
Let's stay on, stay on the natural environment a second. In part, page 2-22 of the EIR, it notes that riparian impacts are less than significant, yet there is the San Bruno Canal or slough immediately to the very south of the project at the edge of the parking lot. Can we, can you assure me that that's been looked into, what the, what construction and/or the new use will have on the slough there?
We definitely have been looking at that. We have worked in conjunction with One Shoreline, which is the San Mateo County Flood Control and Sea Level Rise Management District, to make sure, and BCDC has some jurisdiction because this is title. And so, yes, that is being looked at and all the impact, as the environmental document states, no SEQA-related impacts. And then also looking outside of SEQA at what are One Shoreline and BCDC's requirements, this has been designed to adequately address all of the comments and issues from all of the different agencies.
Thanks. While we're on the slough, I'll go back to one of the potentially significant identified impacts on page 27 about the cultural values. Is there a way you can describe? Well, let me actually give a little context to this. As we know, when the taller buildings on the side of, of San Bruno Mountain were built, there were a significant number of shell mounds, et cetera. The Alone peoples basically were fishing and harvesting from the shore there. And part of that was because it came up the sloughs of what is now our east side. So I'm kind of worried that this, having been a marshland environment in the past, we might find some significant impact. Can you tell me what outreach has been made to either the local tribal leaders or what databases have been searched?
As part of the SEQA requirements, every jurisdiction is required to do tribal outreach. I believe we have six identified tribal contacts that we have sent letters and emails to, for any project that comes through that requires a SEQA review. That outreach has been done. We've not received any response. I will also note, there has been quite a bit of analysis completed in this area related to archaeological and cultural resources. One of the background documents in the past, I believe, identified a potential resource. And there's been lots of additional analysis to determine was that done, could someone else find that? I believe there's been extra borings completed and ultimately was determined that that likely was mistakenly identified. I might ask if Devin or Heidi want to provide any additional background to that, but that is an area where there's been quite a bit of analysis done to determine that there isn't anything there. And we still have mitigation measures that if anything were to be found, that you immediately stop work, you bring professional archaeologists, someone who has the correct credentials to come out, take a look at the site, try to determine who else can be contacted for that. But at this point, we have not received any feedback from any of the tribal.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have for now.
Thank you so much for all the work that's gone into this and the thoughtful presentations. A lot of the questions I have have been asked. But one that I was curious about was how a portion of the mitigation is out of the jurisdiction of South City, because that falls under the city of San Bruno and Caltrans. And so either, could be answered here or something looked more into. I'm curious if there is either context for past successful collaborations that we could kind of look to and count on, or even potentially initial agreements or conversations indicating interest in that kind of cross-jurisdiction collaboration.
Yeah. You want, yeah, okay.
A great example, I will, a great example of this is the South Line project, which is right on, as the commission probably recalls, is right on the border of San Bruno and had the same condition, where there was a significant unavoidable impact because intersection improvements would have, to bring the impact down to less than significant with mitigation, had to occur within the city of San Bruno. And the applicant for that project was actively working with the city of San Bruno to come up with an agreement to implement those improvements required. However, because we as the city are the agency who has to certify the EIR and could not guarantee, it was just, you know, at the last minute, what if it fell apart? Or what if the city of San Bruno decided, we don't want to make that improvement? We can't make that guarantee. So we still had to find it significant and unavoidable. But that is a good example where we know, you know, we worked hand-in-hand with the developer and with the city of San Bruno to kind of come up with a plan to solve those issues. And we do know that they will be implemented in the future as that project is built out. So I think that's a good example of that relationship and those improvements being realized. But, but not being able to, we as the city can't make that guarantee. It's not in our CIP. We don't control the funding.
And I was going to say, similar with Caltrans, like, we're in collaboration with them on many projects. For instance, the Utah Avenue Overpass, which is, had passed environmental design, now we're moving forward to 35% design. Because, obviously, the overpass itself will go over US 101, but there's also, it touches some of the on-ramps, off-ramps. We're in contact with Caltrans staff often on that. And so, for instance, the San Mateo Airport Produce intersection leads into some of those. And so they are looking at those improvements as well. It's similar, where we're all working to figure out what is that ultimate solution that everyone can agree to. We just can't guarantee that they're ultimately going to say yes. But we haven't had them not say yes that I'm aware of up to this point.
Thank you. That's really helpful. And then I know there's a lot of analysis here too around the existing cultural impacts and, you know, what is currently there, specifically the Produce Terminal. And something I'd also be curious about is kind of like a future-looking cultural analysis, particularly with Lindenville and some of the aspirations there around sort of like an artist-maker cultural hub, how this might square with some of what is envisioned around Lindenville and the specific plan. And again, that could be something to report back on or speak to a little bit now.
I think we would bring that back to, I know we've had some high-level discussions. The project team was excited about the direction that the Lindenville specific plan was going. And so I think they have some ideas, but that feels like that would be a good, to be included as part of the next discussion with Planning Commission, unless any of you want to speak to that tonight. We'll move that to the next.
Yes, eyes looking at each other. And then, just the last thing, I think, around context for some of the SEQA analysis around transportation and potential impacts is, you know, some of what I was seeing was also not just mitigation, but also improvements to existing infrastructure to be more aligned with, you know, complete streets and usages, not just for cars, but also for pedestrians and cyclists. And so I would be interested, and again, either now or as a future topic, of seeing how some of the mitigation strategies are also pushing us towards, potentially pushing us towards other separate policy goals, such as complete streets.
That will be definitely something we can highlight. This project would be implementing quite a few of our active mobility projects. For instance, a north-south bike pedestrian path to be able to get from, helping to connect from South Line, once it gets to this area, up towards the Caltrain station. And so this project definitely is implementing some of the active South City things and we can highlight what those are.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, I said last, but now I mean it. Billy, did you say that when you were talking about alternative B, that that one might not be economically feasible? Was that...
Any of these projects, if they were developed, for instance, if you're developing at a lower FAR, the entire project might not be financially feasible. I would ultimately, the applicant team would need to speak to that. Right now, under the current conditions, no projects are financially feasible. Nothing is moving forward because... Nothing is moving forward because it doesn't make sense from a financial standpoint. But there are always, depending on what your purchase price is for a property and then what you can develop on it, certain thresholds of what can and can't be done. And so, the, the project team could speak more to that. But that was one of the considerations of a reduced floor area alternative is that it might make it less feasible, feasible from an economic standpoint.
Thank you.
Nice, Chair.
Yeah, so, I mean, I really appreciate all the work you guys have done for this. Like, I know you guys work really, really hard on these presentations, and it really does show. And I love all the comments that, and questions my fellow commissioners have put forward. I agree with all of them. For me, what I'd love to see is a definite intention to really talk about the transportation mitigation efforts that will happen here, because with Commissioner Baker, we always talk about parking. Like, if it's getting us towards connections with Caltrain and with San Bruno, why is there going to be X number of parking? Like, I'd really love for the public to have that information going in. I think that's going to be really imperative. Thank you.
Pretty much most of the questions have been answered. I do have one thing just from my own education and also for answering someone who may be watching at home. On the historical side or a national historical side, if it is determined what, what potential impacts, because that would be potential acreage loss where you, credit for them, you couldn't build on, if it's determined a national site, a historical site?
It's been determined that it's eligible, but it's not actually been...
Submitted or whatever.
Submitted, correct, correct.
And then basically, on the transportation part, I don't want to digress, but the area I'm concerned about, because we know there's very little access into that site because we know how Shaw Road is, and prior projects, we've always discussed, you know, just the general flow of traffic leaving the city without it being a job site or construction site. The one part I'll be really critical on is, let's say, we, I know we're at stage one, but we finally get to the phase where we do start, this project does start potentially building, are they going to be doing multiple buildings, one at a time? Are they going to be, you know, just a flow of materials in and out? Because sometimes you got to get by 101 where they're, they're going southbound. So I'd be really asking critical questions on that whole dynamics. I know we have our construction teams that discuss how the flow will be and all that, but it's, it's something I want to be concerned about, because we know automatically, no construction site, that corner over there is busy, period. When you start talking, going to Airport Boulevard and out on the freeway, then you put the needs of a, of something of that magnitude. I mean, it's gonna, there'll be a lot of construction sites, we need materials, parking for the employees when they're working there, the construction workers, all those type of things, staging equipment. I know this is all part of the project, but these are the questions that I'll be asking when it does come back to us, that we know that there is a defined plan, because at 1.7 million square feet, especially if it's all done concurrent, that's massive. So I would really have a lot of operational questions. Otherwise, again, the Commission did a very good job with all types of questions, and I'd like to, I understand we do have some public comments, so there's nothing else from the Commission before I close it?
Yes. Have you opened the public hearing?
It's still open.
It's still open, okay, great. We have two public comments. The first one is John Medina.
So for public comments, if you could just wait until the timer starts, and then at three minutes, your time is up.
Great, thank you.
I will now start the timer.
Good evening, Planning Commission members and staff. I'm John Medina. I'm a business agent with Sprinkle Fitters Local 43, and also executive board member with San Mateo Building and Construction Trades Council. First, want to congratulate you guys on probably the best chambers that I've seen in the Bay Area. Of course, this was built by union labor and under a project labor agreement or community workforce agreement, which you, you guys may know. I'm speaking about the Infinite Project tonight, Local 43, and really, all of labor are actually excited about the opportunities that a project this size creates for the local community. We look forward to much-needed projects like these, that Steel Wave, and really, all the developers in South San Francisco are, you know, presenting to this Commission. We hope that these projects will benefit the community, like our local members, and future people looking for pathways into the middle class through, working through the middle, the building trades. Community workforce agreements, like the one that built this facility, benefit programs like the Trades Introduction Program, that prioritizes veterans, women, and those from underserved populations here in San Mateo County. We hope this Commission joins us in asking all of the developers that come to you guys what benefits they plan to give the local community as far as construction goes. We hope that they reach out to the building trades to ensure the use of local apprentices and area standard wages and benefits. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a second speaker card for Tom Traer.
Sure, it's lovely to speak tonight. It's always tough to go up behind John Medina there, he speaks to a lot of these events. It's an honor for me to speak in this building. Like John said, this is built by local union labor, and it's a beautiful, beautiful building. It's, it is definitely one of the finest Commission buildings I've been in. Local apprenticeships offer local families the opportunity to move into the middle class. I'm a second-generation sheet metal worker with Local 104, and having a good union job and the benefits of those paychecks and that health care offered my family, allowed my family to live and work on the peninsula, and allows me and my wife to live and work on the peninsula. These kinds of projects really offer a great opportunity to help bring up the middle class and help people live and work in this community. Local 104 is really excited to support these kinds of projects when they bring in local families, local hire, local apprentices, and good area standard wages. These jobs can offer health care to our local families and can help boost the economy for everybody around. We really like to support projects like this that come in and bring local families this kind of work. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do everyone else would like to make a comment? Any other cards?
We do not have any other speaker cards at this time.
Before I close the public hearing, any more questions from the Commission? With that, I will close the public hearing and turn it back to Commissioners, if they have any final statements before we move on from this item. Commissioner Zhang?
The Chair, I, I, I really like how Billy tried, you know, attempted to answer my questions. How, how you just did is exactly what I would need in the next round when I actually am about to make a vote, is like, okay, you're, you're, you're voting against this, even though we are doing, doing this, 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 that, that are unavoidable, that are significant, however, our benefit is this. Give me some comparison to the past, reference to current projects, like, those would help me determine making the exception. Like, you guys probably know me enough that, like, every time I make an exception, I, I really am nervous. Like, I don't want to, I don't want to start an exception that is unprecedented or, like, that will, uh, 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 set pathway to future leeway and stuff like that. So anytime with those kind of, even though, but, will very, very, will assist me greatly in making an alignment with your recommendation.
Commissioner Shahidi?
Yeah. Thank you, Billy. Great presentation, and thanks, you know, the team. I mean, I love the design, you know, the concept, the landscaping, you know, it's, it's great. The issue that we're addressing here is the impact on the community. We all recognize, you know, now, I live in that neighborhood, and I go to, now, it takes us five minutes from the Grand Avenue and Airport intersection, sometimes it's five minutes. You never used to take that. We can't, no red turn on, imagine with the 450 units built on Airport Boulevard and this massive project, you only have one lane going on to 101. So I would hope you would take these issues real seriously, because the community is really impacted and really concerned, you know, but, and I know that mitigation measures are being taken, but there's great challenges. So I hope you take that in real consideration.
I think you heard most of my comments and what I'd like to see in the final E I R. The only other comment is, I do think it's a well-designed project, and I think as, when both projects are finished, it's going to be a really good-looking campus if, if we can get to these last, final nudges that we'd like. Thanks.
Echoing the appreciation, this is, this is huge and really complex. Grateful for the patience and hard work that goes into this. I would say, just what, what I'd like to see, in addition to the excellent information presented here, is, like, I think we can safely say the community will be impacted, period, and it's just a question of, will it be a net positive or a net negative? And, you know, we, we will make, make our assessments accordingly. But I think because of the, I don't know how much leeway you have in your presentation for this, but CEQA necessarily is framed in terms of, like, this is the bad thing, and this is the mitigation measure. And some of the mitigation measures actually bring us closer to important public policy goals. And so, I think what I would like to see is to help understand where this could lean net positive, is where are the places that this is actually advancing quality of life and, uh, vision, public policy goals, in keeping with policies we have on the book, specific plan, general plan, if, if that makes sense?
Again, thank you. The project itself is beautiful. I mean, I have to admit, it's a very impressive project. Anyone sees the magnitude of it. It's going to be great. I think, hopefully, first of all, for the presenter, thank you very much. I think we've given you enough insights that you will know when it does come back at us, as the Commission has said, we will be addressing transportation issues in many phases, construction, during it, the whole bit. I mean, so that'll be coming back again at you, probably hot and heavy. The traffic issues will become again. There was questions about circulation within the actual compounds. So I think as you kind of see the areas that, that'll be kind of being hit upon after all these mitigated items have been determined and stuff, because it's no fault of anyone in that area when you develop, it's just the nature of the way the current streets are laid out. You have egress coming out of east of 101, and that's just one of the major areas, it's unavoidable, and now we're throwing more on top of it. So that's why it's such a critical area when we bring it to attention in any going way. It's no fault of those trying to build, because, as I said, it's a beautiful building. So again, thank you, and it sounds like we will be seeing you again. So I hope you prep you for the kind of things that we will be asking. So, thank you.
There's no other questions? Okay. Thank you again. Move on to administrative business?
We have no items under administrative business tonight.
Any public comments that haven't already been done?
We do not have any more public comments.
Okay, if there's nothing else from the Commission, I will now adjourn the August 1st, 2024 meeting of the Planning Commission.